Okay. Good evening. I'm councillor Russell Gordon-Smith, the Chair of the Advisory Group. And I'd like to welcome everyone to the meeting. It falls to me to chair this group due to my role as the Cabinet Member for the Built Environment. This meeting has been held virtually and in accordance with the Council's rules for virtual meetings. Councillors are reminded that although this meeting is being held remotely, they're regarded as being present at a meeting of the council and they should observe the normal rules of behaviour. In addition, first of all, can I please ask everyone present in the virtual meeting to turn off, that your microphones remain muted and your camera is turned off whilst you're not addressing the meeting? This will reduce the background noise and avoid any unintentional disturbances. And can members ensure that their mobile phones are turned off or are put in silent mode? Can I also say that the meeting is being audio recorded and live streamed from the Council's website? In addition, a video recording of the meeting will be uploaded to the Council's YouTube channel after the meeting. I would ask members at offices where appropriate for each item to please use the chat function of the meeting to indicate you wish to speak or to raise a point of order or an explanation. And I will invite you to speak at the appropriate time. Each member will be invited to speak in turn. Therefore, I would encourage all members to keep their contributions as clear and concise as possible. And when you refer to the agenda papers, could you please make sure you reference the page or paragraph number as it makes it easier for everyone to keep up? Now, if members wish to leave the meeting at any point, could they please make themselves known to me through the chat function? And I will announce to the meeting that you are, that you're leaving. Finally, we have, I think, four members of the public and/or parish councillors joining us today. I will ask them to make their contributions at the appropriate time on the agenda. My suggestion would be that it is when we come to Agenda Item Five. And I will invite the members of the public to make their contributions. Each speaker from the public is limited to three minutes. And there will be a timing clock showing the time that you've got. And the councillors are, they're allowed five minutes. And now could I ask the Democratic Services Officer, Matthew, to indicate a roll call of members of the committee to confirm who is present at the meeting?
Thank you, Chair. Members, just a very quick roll call in alphabetical order. If you just confirm you're present, that'd be excellent. councillor Brooke?
Yes, I'm here, Matthew.
Councillor Clare?
Yes, present, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Evans?
Yes, I'm here.
Sorry, councillor Evans, that was councillor Edwards.
I'm here too, I heard Evans, but never mind.
I'll try and figure this out. Councillor Hall?
Yes, good evening, I'm present.
Thank you. And councillor Thompson?
Good evening, yes, I'm here, thank you.
That's all members present, Chair. Obviously, I've not had any apologies. Do you want me to just, Chair, while I've just got the mic, just to give a quick rundown of officers that we've got? So we've got quite a number of officers with us this evening. So far, I've seen Strategic Director Dawn Aidi. From the planning team, we've got Adrian Fox, Steve... Sorry, Steve, can't quite get the surname right. Operchick. Bridget. Thank you, thank you. And I've also seen Jill Lee. And finally, Chair, as you mentioned earlier, we've got a number of members of the public. So we've been joined by Leanne Cooper, Eleanor Bell, David Ash, councillor Laming and councillor Williams also with us, Chair.
Right, okay, thank you very much. Right, okay, we've had apologies. Disclosures of interests. To receive any disclosure of interest from members and officers in matters to be discussed. Any disclosures?
Nothing registered in the...
Right, okay, that seems to be clear. And now, Item Agenda Three, to note any requests from councillors to make representations on an agenda item.
So, thank you, Chair. So, yeah, so we've had councillor Williams and councillor Laming. But I believe councillor Williams no longer wishes to speak. And so it's just councillor Laming under the Winchester City Councillors.
Right, okay. And if that's acceptable, I think we'll put them all together under Agenda Item Five when we get to that. We now have the minutes of the previous meeting. And whether there's any changes or corrections that are noted before they're signed off.
Councillor Hall, Chair?
Hello, yes?
Good evening, Chair, thank you. I was noting on the minutes, and I believe it was a point that I asked at the last Committee meeting, that we should have the Partnership for South Hampshire update. And it says in the minutes at a future meeting, but I thought we did read at the next meeting last time. Clearly, we don't have that on the agenda today. But Chair, could we please have it on the next Committee meeting?
I will make a note of that. And we'll make sure it goes on the next item, the next, the next LPAG meeting, if you're agreeable with that.
Absolutely, thank you, Chair. And can I be terribly cheeky and ask Mr Ash to turn off his camera? Thank you.
Right, okay, well, we'll move on then if we're in agreement with the minutes.
Councillor Thompson, Chair, sorry.
Councillor Thompson?
I'm sorry, this isn't about the minutes. But I've just had a message from councillor Rutter saying that she too hadn't been sent a participating link. So I wonder whether, Matthew, you could send her one and then she could join, please?
Of course, yeah.
Thank you.
Right, okay, in that case, we'll move on to public participation. And I think the first person on the list is David Ash, who has three minutes to speak. Are you ready, Mr Ash?
Yes, Chair, I am.
Is the clock showing?
Right, good evening. Uppam Parish remains bruised by a four-year battle to deal with proposals for 1,500 houses on Mortimer's Lane between the National Park and Fair Oak as part of the Eastleigh SGO, which was resoundingly rejected by the inspector in early 2020. The current Sheila, which you will be talking about later, includes for a potential 1,042 dwellings in our community of 293 houses, 993 of which will also be on Mortimer's Lane. Exactly the same arguments will apply as were run through at the EIP last year. The arguments endorsed by the inspector were that development on Mortimer's Lane had the potential to seriously visually impact on the National Park. And more significantly, that highly car-dominated development would cause significant harm to the character of rural lanes, largely single-track, which are an integral part of the character of this part of the National Park, not only in Uppam but also in Oselbury. More widely, it was accepted that car-dominated proposals on Mortimer's Lane and north of Fair Oak would cause huge congestion within Colden Common. WCC joined the EIP to make that case powerfully. Eastleigh's proposals were for 5,300 dwellings. The current Sheila identifies a potential for twice that number, 10,700 dwellings within the southern parishes of Uppam, Durley, Kirkridge, Bishopsworth and Shedfield. This is an area of notoriously poor infrastructure, served in terms of sustainable transport by single-track railway, stations at Botley and Hedges End only, and very limited bus services. Result will be a highly car-dominated development, likely if not inevitably. And with a strong desire line for traffic heading for Winchester and towards London, the rural lanes inside and outside the park will become rat runs and quickly clogged. The geology of Uppam presents its own issues for development. That part of the parish outside the National Park is largely low-lying and flat with a rich mosaic of clay meadows bounded by mature oak hedgerows, designated as an area of special landscape quality when that designation existed. Aside from traffic, the chief challenge for development is drainage. There's no main drainage and Uppam's recent development of 20 houses at Torbay Farm has waterlogged gardens. And despite a so-called Suds Swale, flooding problems are occurring downstream as far as Fair Oak. This was predicted by the parish council despite the best assurances from the developer. But nobody likes to say, "I told you so." That's a development of just 20 houses. We understand the Sheila process is one of gathering and siving alternatives rather than preparing proposals. However, we feel the siving process is unfit for purpose if it does not include for issues such as the likelihood of creating flood risks to proximity of National Park or some assessment of valued landscape as noted by the NPPF. Particularly where designations such as area of special landscape quality will give a clear indication of that value. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I might just make one point, if I may. This is from the document, Street Housing and Employment Land Availability Assessment for 2018. And in paragraph 913, it says, "The Sheila does not recommend which sites are most suited to meet any remaining requirement as it is not a policy document and does not allocate sites. This will be done by the local plan using the information provided by the Sheila on potentially available, achievable and suitable sites." So the fact that something is in the Sheila site doesn't necessarily mean to say it's ever going to get built on if it goes against the local plan. But thank you councillor Ash for your very succinct summing up of the points. And I have duly noted them, thank you. Right, now, the next person to speak is, I think we've got councillor Eleanor Bell from...
Yes?
Evening.
Yeah, I can't see, I can't see myself on screen, but I'm...
Oh, we can see you.
You can see me, that's fine, that's fine. I've had to change, I'm sorry, I've had to change computers several times to not have it drop out. Okay? Well, thank you. Yes, we're ready. Thank you for allowing me to speak today or this evening. I'm speaking as a Hersley Parish councillor. But much of our concerns also affected joining parishes and wider than the wider district. I welcome the advance notice that we have here in this meeting of the revised Sheila to 2021 and also the responses to the strategic issues consultation. I have a few comments and queries in relation to both of these, mainly to seek reassurance for parishioners going forward. In relation to the second presentation, the responses to the strategic issues and priorities, we know the order of the process, but not the time scale. Is it possible to give approximate dates for when the Regulation 18 draft plan will be published and then consulted? In relation to the Homes for All section, I note that Approach One is favoured and goes forward into your recommended approach. Whereas locally, we had favoured Approach Four and some also a fifth option. So I would ask the strategic plan team confer closely with smaller parishes, such as Hersley, to ensure that they are not simply left out of the equation. The MTRA district and the larger parishes would not include us as we are smaller. The housing requirement set at 700 dwellings per annum, but also unmet need, possible unmet need from the Partnership for South Hampshire. Again, we would ask for some clarification of when and what this quantum might be known. As with regards to Sheila details, the maps that have been sent out, I'm fully aware that these are proposals by the landowners and not plans or proposals from the council. But we would welcome assurance that those sites which do not figure this time have in fact been removed and will not form part of future consideration. And we also would ask whether there might be a further round of Sheila before the local plan draft is actually finalised. We are pleased to see the major tract of land which had been named Royal Down has been removed together with those Hampshire farmland areas which were seen to complement that. In terms of the Hersley sites, some are closer to Winchester than to Hersley Village. But we would ask for close consideration and consultation. For the other ones which concern the village itself, please note that some of these have been regarded as exception sites and again would require close consultation, please, with the parish. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Bell. Right. Mr Fox? Oh, did he? Okay. Well, if Mr Fox would like to make a reply to those points or...
Thank you, Chairperson. Yes, if I can, just to help out councillor Bell, the published timetable for the local plan is in what's known as the Local Development Scheme. That was agreed by Cabinet in July of this year. It's available on our website, I can certainly send you the link to that document. That says that we'll be coming out with the Draft Reg 18 Plan for consultation next September, October time for public consultation and the Reg 19 Plan the following year. And we have said if we can move fast, we will. In terms of the question regarding PUSH, my colleague, Mr Overchick, will deal with that issue as part of the presentation on the analysis of the feedback because it is an important point about obviously the work that is ongoing with PUSH.
Matthew?
In terms of, will we be doing another call for sites? Yes, we will, at the Reg 18 stage, we had to do another call for sites to see if obviously there are any other suitable sites going out there, which obviously we need to consider. I trust that's answered your questions, councillor Bell, thank you.
Thank you very much, Adrian Fox. And now, Matthew, I think there was Brian Laming to talk.
Chair, yes, so we've got Leanne Cooper.
Oh, sorry, Leanne Cooper. Well, let's have Leanne Cooper if she's ready.
Hello, thank you for, thank you for letting me speak. I'm on Compton Parish Council, but I'm here more also as a member of the public, really. And I think some of the, one of the main question I really wanted to know, which has possibly already partly been answered is, when will the detail be available for the public to see? In terms of numbers and the specific sort of agreed sites? And I suppose what's more relevant to my, my local area is the, how is Compton going to be affected? Whilst there's been a lot of publicity about the, the large part of Royal Down not being within this, there are, there does seem to be still quite large pockets of development that sort of surround what was the, the site. And I'd like a bit more clarity on that, if that's possible.
Right.
Thank you.
Could I ask Adrian Fox to answer that, if he possibly can?
Thank you, Chair. We are at the moment trying to focus on analysing all the representations. We've still got a lot more work to do in terms of processing because we did have a fantastic response. We are, my colleague Bridget will explain, this is the early heads-up in terms of what sites have come forward. Because a lot of parish councils have asked us, well, you've done the call for sites, can we see the new sites? And some of them have been very proactive in terms of assessing the 2020 sites. So no decision's yet been made on any of the sites. And in terms of any of the housing numbers, because obviously the second item on the agenda is the development strategy, which obviously will be part of thing. You've got to obviously agree the development strategy first before we know what settlements we're actually looking at and obviously work out the quantum of development. So at the moment, all we're saying is, these are the sites that are being put forward. Please, as a parish council, can you be proactive and look at those sites? Hopefully with a kind of an open mind and assess them. We will then obviously be having discussions with the parish councils once obviously we know the development strategy. And as councillor Gordon Smith has said, we've got a lot more sites than we actually need. So we need to pick the best of the best sites. But that work will go on basically into the autumn. But like I say, at the moment, we haven't made any decisions on the sites. In terms of obviously, we need to know the development strategy and obviously do our high-level assessment. But what we're asking parish councils to be is proactive, look at the seed of sites because they're not going away. And obviously, you know the area much better than we do. Undertake your own assessment, then when we have conversations with you, you can say to us, actually, there's some local reasons why obviously this site is not suitable for development. And we can hopefully develop that in partnership with you. So that's what we're trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Adrian, for answering, a master of clarity. Right, Chair, sorry to... Yes?
Not a member of the group, but councillor Reed, I noticed, as indicated, he wishes to raise a point. Is it normal to have a point? At this particular juncture? Not really, Chair, but I'm not sure what it is.
No, indeed.
Councillor, sorry, Reed, you said. Councillor Reed has raised a point. I think it might be useful to deal with that before we get moved on any further. And so if you'd like to speak, councillor Reed?
Thank you, sorry, I've only just managed to join this particular meeting. With regards to the document that you've published, will this be available online? Better still, will it be available in a hard copy? Because having worked on three or four local plans in the past, you sometimes have to go back to the original documentations.
Yes, I'm sure that can be arranged. I'm not sure, if people put in a request for a hard copy, I'm sure we can provide it. I'm not sure if you want to provide hard copies, but it's an awful lot of paper that would be going out if people don't really need it. Is that a sensible view, Adrian?
Thank you, Chair, if I could answer councillor Reed's question. There will be, this is, like I say, the only, the heads-up, early heads-up in terms of what sites have come forward. We will need to go to Cabinet with a formal approval to seek approval to publish the Sheila. And that hopefully will take place before Christmas. So that will include more detailed information about the actual sites, the performers that probably you're familiar with from the previous Sheila. And then obviously, once we've got that approval, we will put that on as a GIS layer onto the new local plan website. Can't do that at the moment, but we are basically giving you the early heads-up. These are the sites that are available. And then obviously, like I say, a more formal, detailed Sheila report will be going to Cabinet. And we hope to do that before Christmas. But we've got to finish our internal assessment first.
Thank you, Adrian, it's only just the fact that it will only stay on the iPad for a certain length of time. Once it disappears, it disappears, hence the hard copy. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you. Now, we've got one more person, Brian Laming, I think, who wants to speak. Is Brian Laming available?
Yes, Chair, I'm here.
Right. I would invite you to speak then.
Thank you. Basically, we would like some reassurance in the Battery Farm and Oliver's Battery Ward that a lot of this area is highly environmentally sensitive. And we need to take that into consideration when we're looking at the Sheila sites. It may sound quite strange, but the watercourse starts at Pitt, goes through the golf course, down through Hersley and into Otterbourne, where we've got the main water supply for not only Winchester but also Eastleigh, Southampton and the Isle of Wight. So we need to take very careful consideration of what we do and how that affects that. The other thing that we start looking at is the size of some of these applications for the Sheila site. If you look at the golf course, for example, that was more than double Oliver's Battery. And as it's long there, we need to look at the actual infrastructure because there's no bus service as such. And restrictions into Oliver's Battery is quite tight. Romsey Road is one of the most congested, the second most congested road in the area. We have also problems at Compton, Shawford and down to Osborne, where we've also got to take into account the environmental implications of what we're doing. Certainly, they have a lot of trouble on Main Road at Osborne, going down the hill from Shawford where the sewage overflow is on a regular basis and it cannot sustain any more housing on that infrastructure. Because if it does overrun, it's liable to go into the Bourne River straight next to where the boreholes are. So we need to take that into account. But mainly, we want to make sure that whatever we do, hopefully, will not affect the local shops and the community that is based on. If we put too many people into a community by doubling its size, you destroy that community. And we cannot afford that. And we need the infrastructure in place before anything is done. So I would just like the reassurance that Sheila will start looking at that information while it's being compiled. Thank you, Chair, I like to be short and brief.
Thank you very much, councillor Laming. And yes, your points are noted and they were wonderfully brief and concise, thank you. Right, we've had the public notes and participation. I think we might move now on to Agenda Item Six, which is a presentation on the Sheila sites to be done by Bridget Taylor. So Bridget Taylor, if you're ready?
I am, thank you, Chair. I will just share my screen. Okay. Right, good evening. So as Adrian mentioned, the purpose here is to provide a high-level overview of where we have got to with the Sheila in advance of the full Sheila report going to Cabinet, hopefully before Christmas, which will contain more detail. So this is the heads-up to give you an overview of the sites which have come forward in the Call for Sites which was undertaken this year. So a recap of where we've got to so far. We did a call for sites in 2020 and we did some broad assessment of the sites. And the Sheila was published last year in August with some high-level assessment. And then we did a further call for sites at the start of this year. And since then, we have been undertaking the same broad assessment of those sites. And also across all of the sites, we have been doing additional assessment work, looking at some of the points that have been raised by the speakers already. So looking at landscape sensitivity of the sites, highways access and so on, and location and relative to facilities. So when we did the Call for Sites earlier this year, we actually asked for a wider range of sites. So not just homes and employment sites, which are what published in the Sheila. But we did also at that point in time, ask for details of any sites which might be available for biodiversity net gain, green infrastructure, carbon offsetting or nitrogen offsetting, or so land which might be available for the generation of renewable energy or for details of any brownfield land which might not already have been captured in our brownfield register. That deals with the first two of those, which is the, the homes and the employment sites. Now, this slide provides a bit of an overview, hopefully to give some context. So we're, we're looking at delivering housing in the blackout line excluding the South Downs National Park and the yellow hatched area. All of the little purple and orange bits, all of the sites which have been put forward to the Sheila. So in total, in both, all of the years to date, the total area of land which has been submitted is 3,750 hectares, which has got the capacity to deliver 57,000, over 57,600 homes. So putting that into context, we actually only need approximately 30 to 90 hectares. So putting that into context, we actually only need approximately 30 to 90 hectares of land to deliver the housing that we need to over the planned period. So we have significantly more land in the Sheila than is ever proposed to be taken forward for allocation in the local plan. So highlights of the key changes. In the call for sites this year, we received an additional 115 housing sites and 10 green sites, but a number of these didn't have the landowner's consent. So they've been marked as such. The housing sites, some of those were in fact not new. So we've been through and checked that the existing sites stick with their same numbers and new sites are given a new number. You will have noticed that we have five sites which have been withdrawn. And the Royal Downs site is one of those, so the large H U O two site. But also Compton and Shorford O three, which was also part of that proposal. Instead, that has been replaced with a site called H U twelve. And Hampshire County have also withdrawn a number of other sites which were unrelated to the Royal Downs proposal. So in total, we have 391 housing and employment sites in the Sheila for consideration. So I propose now just to take you quite swiftly through settlement by settlement to show you the broad location of the sites which have been put forward. Those which are coloured orange are the ones that have already been in the Sheila up to now. So they're in the published Sheila on the website already. And the purple ones are the new sites which have not to date been in the public domain, but which are being included in the Sheila when it gets published for the 2021. So we have Wantstone here, which actually encompasses sites through the valley there. We have four sites in total and all of those are brought forward from previous years. Mitchell Diva, again, all of these sites are already in the published Sheila and have been rolled forward for inclusion. I'll be focusing here really on sites which are new, just to make efficient use of everybody's time. So Crawley, we have five sites in total. And the new one is this C R O five, which is the archive a site which has some surplus Class E commercial type space and car parking, which is exceeding their operational requirements. So it might be available for redevelopment. Moving on to Spa Shult, these sites are all the same as what is in the public. Sorry, this one site is the same as what's been in the Sheila to date. Littleton and Hairstock, we have one very large new site to the north of the settlement there, L H sixteen. And the others, which are all rolled forward from previous years. I've provided a bit more detail on the next slide, just to try to demonstrate some of these sites. Down here, L H O eight, nine, 10 and so on, adjacent to each other. So it's not entirely easy to see the boundaries between them, but I've tried to provide a close up there. Moving on to Headborne Worthy, we've got eight sites. All of those have rolled forward. One of those is an employment site, which is H W O six. But probably the large one of note there in the middle, H W O five is a large residential site which the contributor suggests has capacity for about 2,000 homes. Moving on to South Wantstone, we have two new sites this year. There's S W O six and S W O seven. I think I have some close up detail here. So S W O six is shown hatched in red here because it's actually proposed as an extension to the settlement boundary. It's already covered by development. S W O seven is adjacent and between that and an existing Sheila site. Moving on to Old Allsford, these two sites are already in the Sheila, so no change. Northington, next, we have two sites. Sorry, one is not entirely easy to see. It's up here to the can you see my cursor? No, you can't. There's one up to the north of Northington near the crossroads. Now, N O O one was excluded at the first stage of the Sheila last year. So the expectation is probably it will receive similar treatment in the Sheila this year. But at this stage, everything is still in for consistency. So they'll all be subject to the same level of assessment. Okay, and the green areas are, as I said at the start, that we had asked for land, which might be available for carbon offsetting, so tree planting, et cetera. And so those are sitting outside of the Sheila process. Etch and Stoke, we have four sites here, two are new this year. Which to the top there, Etch and Stoke O four and O two, sorry, O three, both to the north and a large area of green space, which has been suggested might be suitable to take land out of agriculture and create wetland and woodland as a biodiversity improvement. Moving on to Bighton. Bighton, we have two sites. One is new this year, which has been submitted for possible self custom build or market housing. So I've provided a close up there to try to orient you to where that is. New Allsford, we have nine sites in total. All of those were in the Sheila last year. But we have a new site just across the boundary into Bishop Sutton, which is B S O one, which I've included on the map there for completeness. Next to the Etch and Valley, we have five sites, three of those are new, so those purply pink ones shown there. Okay, moving on to Winchester and the surrounding parishes. Kingsworthy has 10 sites in total. Kingsworthy O one, which is shown purple there, it has previously been in the Sheila. It fell out in 2019 as it wasn't resubmitted, but they've asked for it to be put back in via the call for sites earlier this year. Moving on to Winchester Town. We have 16 sites in total. I'll show you a close up shortly. Of these sites, we have four which are new this year, so Winchester twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven and twenty eight. Though I would note that at least two of the sites in Winchester were excluded at stage one last time around. For example, Winchester nineteen was excluded at an early stage because of tree issues. We also have the River Park Leisure Centre in here now this time as well. And one site which previously was in here, which was Winchester fifteen, has now been withdrawn. There's a close up there showing the leisure centre, which is Winchester twenty three. Sorry, I should say the former leisure centre. Okay. Apologies, I'm driving two computers here, trying to keep them in sync. Okay, moving on to Hersley. So obviously, the first thing that jumps out is that we've had the large Royal Downs site removed here. Now, I would like to highlight, there's a variation from the published maps in your pack. So associated with the Royal Downs proposal, there was H U O two and also the Hampshire County site C S O three, which was south of Oliver's Battery. That site is still showing on the maps in your pack, C S O three, but has now been withdrawn. Unfortunately, at the time of going to print or circulation, we didn't have confirmation at that point in two, but we do now. So that's the northern area of Hersley and obviously in the village as well. We have some more detail here of a number of smaller sites in and around the village which have been put forward this year. And then moving on to Oliver's Battery again. So your map will be showing C S O three to the south here, but that this map I'm showing you now is a more accurate update. So we've got the two sites in Oliver's Battery. The new one is O B O two, which is on the site of Red Inn Sign and Maybush. Okay, moving on to the southern parishes. Compton and Shorford. So as I said here, you'll notice the absence of C S O three, which previously took up quite a large area. And also C S O five has also been withdrawn from the Sheila. So a number of sites though still new, these purple ones shown to the south. A number of these are actually proposed for self build type development. Moving on to Otterbourne. We have eight sites in Otterbourne and all of those have been rolled forward from previous years, so no change there. Then Colden Common, we have 16 sites in total. Though some of these are multiple configurations for the same site. So there's new submissions here, a C C seventeen and eighteen. Seventeen is a very small site in the residential garden of a property, shown to the south there. And C C eleven was previously in and C C O three previously in the Sheila and have come back in at the request of the site owner. So that's why their numbering is not consecutive for those new sites. Okay, there's a bit of close up detail there, just to provide a bit more detail on some of those purple areas. Okay, moving on to Uppam. Five sites in Uppam and one of those is new, which is the small U P O five, which is quarter of a hectare in size, just adjacent to the boundary with the South Downs National Park there. Durlie, there's a large number of sites in Durlie. We have 24 in total and four of those are new this year. D U twenty two is of a reasonable size, this new purple one to the south, which is 43 hectares in size. D U twenty three and twenty four, which are also new, are much smaller sites, less than a hectare. And I'd note that D U twenty four has recently been refused planning permission for dwellings in 2019. Moving on to Bishop's Waltham. We have 26 sites in total. Some of these are actually, some of the sites in Bishop's Waltham are just over the boundary into the South Downs National Park. And we also have some green sites which have been submitted by the parish council there for consideration. B W twenty is one that has fallen out of the Sheila in previous years and come back in at the owner's request. And the ones that are actually in the South Downs National Park are B W thirty, thirty one, thirty three, thirty four, thirty six and thirty eight. Moving to Kerdridge, we have 35 sites in total and nine of those are new this year. We also have two green sites and this in particular, this green site shown running along the waterway is the one that has not got the landowner's consent in a number of cases. So that has been marked against the file for those green sites. Apologies, so there's some close up detail on Kerdridge there, which shows sort of a number of sites clustering together. That's C U ten, thirty eight, O nine, thirty nine and thirty eight. And then heading to Shedfield, we have 35 sites, 12 of those are new this year. Though some of those are overlapping somewhat. So Shedfield forty three and forty six are almost the same site. So really 11 new sites. And there's one green site showing there, G S O nine. And then close up detail there. And a bit more close up detail there, just quickly. Okay, and then Whitley, we have three sites and all of those have been in the Sheila already last year. W H O seven was actually excluded at stage one last year, so would likely receive similar result this time around due to the presence of protected trees. And then Wickham. Sorry. Computer's frozen. There we go. Wickham, we have 25 sites, though again, some of these are multiple configurations of the same piece of land. Many of those have rolled forward, though there are three new sites, which are Wickham twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven. And two of those are quite small sites, which have been the subject of some prior discussion. Sort of single dwelling type size. Wickham twenty seven is a larger site and actually overlaps with previous sites and has capacity for about 100 dwellings. Sorry, there's some close up detail there. Moving to Swanmore. Twenty sites in Swanmore, five of which are new. That's Swanmore seventeen to twenty one. And Swanmore O six was excluded at stage one last year, so we would expect similar this time around due to the presence of a site of importance for nature conservation. Close up detail there. Okay, Soberton, two sites in Soberton, both of those have been in the Sheila already. So there's nothing new to report there and they're both quite small in size. Next, we have nine sites here, five of these are new. And one of those, B O O six, is a proposal for a Gypsy and traveller pitches. Okay, and Southwick and Woodley, we have apologies, we have one green site, which is slightly overlapping outside of the council's boundary. But the other two sites are proposed for residential development. The site one has actually got capacity for 414 dwellings. But site two was excluded at stage one of the Sheila last year due to flood risk issues. So we would expect similar this time around. And then last but certainly not least, we have Denmeade with a large number of sites. So we've actually got 43 sites around Denmeade and that includes 10 sites which are new this year. One of these sites, which is Denmeade fifteen, was excluded at stage one last time because of the presence of a sink. So at this stage, that's been included in the Sheila report, but those issues of the sink, which is site of importance for nature conservation, and those issues will be highlighted again in the report when it is finalized. So then there's just a little bit of close up detail there on Denmeade. So most of those sites really are over to the east, about a few little ones to the west. And that is my whistle stop tour of all the new sites in the Sheila. So before I stop sharing, shall I leave, shall I leave that in place in case anyone wanted to go back and look at any particular sites perhaps?
Thank you very much, Bridget. Very difficult to cover such a big area so quickly. Right, we've got councillor Evans, Chair, and then councillor Hall. Right, let's have councillor Evans then, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Two things, was there just Bull Hunt that proposed a Gypsy and Traveller site? And I was slightly concerned that we seem to be making statements about the likelihood of whether these sites would be suitable for housing. Surely we shouldn't be making any statement at all. That should be at the next stage.
Right. You're correct in that, yes.
And Gypsy and Traveller?
Would you let me to answer that, Chair?
Would Bridget, please?
I am afraid I don't have a definitive answer. It's the only one that's been put forward for solely that use. I think another, a number of other sites have suggested that they could be available for any type of residential and they've listed all of the possible uses, but that's the only one that's been put forward solely for that use, I believe.
You moved off that very quickly. Could I just see the Bull Hunt one again? It was towards the end. Forgive me, but I just can't see where it is.
It's in the middle, the purple one, B O O six. It's in the middle, the purple one, BO O six.
Okay, thank you.
Right, thank you councillor Evans. And now councillor Horle, please.
Thank you, thank you, Chair, a couple of questions. You've mentioned on several occasions this evening that the final publication of the Sheila will be going to Cabinet in the latter part of the year, December time. Am I correct in assuming that there'll be further LPG committee meetings before that final paper is drafted, for us to understand the further consideration of sites and to allow us to participate before that is finalised for Cabinet? And also, you mentioned this evening that we need between thirty, Bridget, I think, and ninety hectares of land, which is quite a variable. And we're not being clear at the moment whether that's just the seven hundred that you've identified per annum for our allocation, or whether we are committing or even considering taking housing for authorities in the push area. Could you please give us clarity so that we all understand what numbers we're all working towards? Or if they're still up for debate, and if so, when will that debate take place? Thank you.
If I might answer that, there are planned to be two more LPG meetings, which I think are going to be in November, we might have to set the dates at the end of this meeting. I think the question about the density per hectare is quite a difficult one to be absolutely specific, because if you've got an inner city or close to a city, you might have a higher density than further away. And also, when you've got a larger site, you have to allow more for the infrastructure and roads and what have you, than if it's a small site already surrounded by roads. So it's hard to be absolutely specific about what density you can achieve. And then obviously, there's issues, you know, there might be topography or other features that don't allow you to fit an awful lot onto a site.
Chair, during councillor Horle's question, Mr Finch.
Oh, right, okay. Adrian, I'm sure you can come up with a much better answer than me. You'd like to speak?
Perhaps if I, having I just speak, to answer councillor Horle's second question, if that's all right, Chair, in terms of push? Are neighbouring authority meeting that, if that's okay?
Yes.
Thank you, okay, good evening, members, good evening, parish councils and members of the public. Yes, I mean, it's a perennial question for us, as you know. There is work that's occurring by push, which we, of course, as you know, are a member of. So that's something which we are able to contribute towards and to participate in, which I think is the right the right way for us to do that. And the reason it's best to do that is not because we've got a good history of working collectively along the whole of Southampton through push, but equally because the way things stand at the moment is we have a duty to cooperate, as you know, so we have to have that dialogue and discourse with our neighbouring authorities. And part of that is obviously where they're not in a position necessary to be able to meet their own need. And they're all at various different stages of plan-making as well, which we keep a very careful eye on in terms of our near neighbours. So at the moment, that work's not concluded. The figures that we have, we've talked about tonight, seven hundred per annum, build a little bit of headway, because unless the government changes the way that the figures are calculated, and they've said in the White Paper that's a possibility, but at the moment, that's not the case. So we've worked and given ourselves a little bit of headroom. But basically, we will still have to have that discourse, and that's probably something which we keep a very careful eye on and participate in. And that's a discussion probably for, you know, first half of next year in terms of what that what that work by push throws out in terms of, you know, the areas that they're looking at in terms of, you know, significant areas of development that could be used to meet need that's not Winchester City Council's need outside of the National Park. So we can't give you at the moment a definitive answer. What we can absolutely give you, though, is the fact that that's something we keep a very careful eye on, how that work is progressing. And once that comes to fruition, obviously, we will need to consider what we do by way of accommodating any development which is not meeting Winchester's own need. Thank you, Chair.
Chair, could I just ask a supplementary whilst I have the microphone? Which is, in terms of the review of data, officers have said this evening that there's still a considerable amount of data to review. We haven't, we know, looked at all the consultation feedback for the economic section, for example. The biodiversity section hasn't been completed. So all of that learning, obviously, then influences our approach to development and our understanding. When will that all be completed? Are officers able to advise, please?
I'll defer, thank you councillor Horle, yeah, I mean, that's a top priority for us, is processing that. I mean, in a way, as we know, we didn't know quite how we would fare during a consultation during a lockdown period, and we talked about that and how we'd approach it. If anything, we had quite an overwhelming response, which is fantastic, but does mean that there's a lot of information and data for us to go through. A lot of that work has been completed, and that's, it's coming forward tonight. And you'll hear that in the next part, which Steve Overcheck will introduce for us in terms of what we've got there back on the vision and also the development strategy, but there's still a lot of work to do. That's a priority for us, and that's something which I know Adrian's team's working, as we speak, basically very hard to, you know, to bring to a conclusion, but I couldn't put a finite date on it, but the answer is simply as quick as we possibly can. And as you've mentioned there, councillor Horle, you know, and as councillor Gordon Smith has mentioned, we will be looking to programme in future meetings, this group, to get feedback on those important issues, which will then lead into the draft local plan, which we'll consult on autumn next year. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Simon, thank you.
Councillor Brooke was next, Chair.
Right, councillor Brooke.
Thank you, Chair. So following on from the presentation, thank you, Bridget, as well. So you've clarified some of the sites which were dropped out last year and have come back in. I just wondered if it would be possible for us to know which ones are completely new, like they've never been in and dropped out, because presumably there's some that were in a few years ago. So I just wondered if it's possible to have that information, which ones are genuinely completely new, have not been submitted to us before. And also, as a side note, on the push thing, this one's for Simon Finch, I think, is I sort of feel like we're passive in, although we're part of the conversation with push, it feels like we're passively sat waiting for them to tell us what they want from us. And because we are going through the local plan process, we've already been delayed significantly from when we originally planned to have it completed. What leverage does that give us to try and get them to give us an insight earlier regarding the housing numbers they might have? Because of course, when they present their housing numbers to us, they will have an awful lot of information to justify that. And then I'm also aware of other councils that have had their local plans rejected, because as we've always discussed, Joe, duty to cooperate isn't necessarily duty to do. But it feels as if the inspectors have clamped down a lot more strongly on that recently. So I just wondered if Mr Finch could come back on that, thank you.
Can I pass that over to you, Simon?
Yes, by all means, Chair, and then I think there was a question with councillor Brooke again, which I think hopefully Bridget can shed some light on in terms of which are the truly new ones and which are ones which have come in, dropped out and come back in again or whatever. So I'll defer that one for Bridget, if I may. Yeah, it's a good question. It is something which is, it's always going to be a challenge. You've still, unless the system were to change, and I suspect we don't know when or how those planning forms consulted on last year are going to play out. But what does appear to be happening now within government is, you know, they're probably having a bit of a pause and a rethink. And they had forty-four thousand, I think, of comments back on the draft last year on the proposals. And at the moment, duty cooperates doing this, so the best mechanism, one of the best mechanisms for us to fulfil that obligation, and you're quite right, if you don't do that, you run the risk of getting to an advanced stage of the plan and then finding you run into real problems with the inspector for the reasons that you mentioned effectively. So I don't know, it's much passive, it's more about collective cooperation really and working together. So we do have input into that. But even if we'd have taken the view, for whatever reason, we didn't really want to participate, whether it's that Greenbout work or whether it's the strategic developmental opportunity areas, then that work would go on regardless. So, yeah, the view, I think collectively, is that we would be better participating and having an active role in those work streams to influence them as best that we can. But ultimately, I think, as you said yourself, and you're absolutely correct, it is a duty to cooperate, it's not a duty to, you know, the people, the only people that can designate sites within Winchester City Council's area is Winchester City. However, it would be naive to think, wouldn't it, that, you know, that work does not influence that. And that's something which needs to happen. The advantage, I suppose, we have over many parts of the country and areas where I've worked previously, there was no push. So you then, you're starting at least here in a sort of a way which has got a long-established way to work together collectively. But that does not mean to say, as you know, councillor Brooke, that that means we would agree on everything. And it may well involve some difficult choices that we would have to make. But I think regardless of whether we're in or out or whatever, that work's going to happen or something equivalent to it. So I think the best option for us is to see where we are next year, when the results of that come out, and then it's for us to decide what to do with it. But I absolutely agree, I think if you don't do that, and almost you sort of, you want to look, deal with it differently, the risk then is that we could get to an inspector who says, you've not demonstrated that you've had to address this issue, and I'm not satisfied that you've done that effectively. So I think it's probably the best way that we can do it to reduce the risk for us. Thank you, Chair.
Sorry, so just as supplementary on that, Simon, just because we haven't had the push update on the agenda this evening that was requested at the last meeting, we haven't really seen any evidence of our proactive involvement in push. So I guess as councillors on this committee, we are reassured by that. So I wonder if you could help us to understand the nature of that interaction that we've had.
Absolutely, yes, thank you, as a broker, and maybe that Mr Overcheck will say, he will say a little bit more about this and hopefully provide you some of the reassurance that you're looking for. There are various work streams within push, there's a planning officers group as well, Push POG, it's wonderfully named. And we are a member of that, and Steve Overcheck leads on that for us. And they help to provide steer and overview of some of the, or steer on some of the work that the joint committee accept, or which, again, we're members of and are represented by councillor Cutler, normally with the chief executive. So there is that engagement process that we can participate in. In terms of, as Adrian said earlier, in actual fact at the moment, there probably isn't a huge amount, we could tell you, in terms of being able to share what, where we are, where we've reached with the push work, but that work is ongoing. Clearly, the events of the last twelve months plus have, as like anything, have had an impact on that. But as soon as we've got something meaningful to share with you, absolutely happy to do that. And that's what we promised to do at the last one. So the process is ongoing, the work teams are moving forward. And as I say, we do have professional input into that via the push planning officers group as well. So that's probably about as much reassurance as I can provide at this stage. But as I said, even if we weren't actively participating in it, then that work would almost certainly continue anyway. So I think better that we do that and try to influence it as we have been doing. Thank you, Chair.
Right, thank you, Simon. And now you had one question, which Bridget Murphy, Bridget Taylor would be best equipped to answer about new sites.
Sure, yes, yeah, I do have that information in a spreadsheet, so I could email it to you. Assuming if you'd like to know sort of the list with Denmead, I could pull that information out of the spreadsheets and email that to you tomorrow, if you like.
Yeah, thank you, much appreciated.
Right, thank you, Bridget.
Chair, we've got four members have indicated questions. We've got three members of the advisory group, councillors Thompson, Clear and Horle.
Right.
And then councillor McLean, who's not a member of the advisory group, is also.
Okay, well, let's start with the advisory group then, and their questions.
So it's councillor Thompson.
Councillor Thompson.
Thank you very much, Chair, yeah, just a couple of questions. I believe in the past, when we've presented the Sheila, there have been statistics available for each plot, sort of informing us what, you know, what each plot can, each site can contain. And I just wondered whether that was something that we would be looking at, perhaps, you know, a bit further down the line, that was the first question. And the second was, I know we've been out twice now for a call for Sheila sites, and we've now got this updated document with all the new ones in. How long does a Sheila last? And are, is it sort of always open and that, you know, landowners can come and put their sites on, or is that it now for this local plan? Thank you.
Adrian, could you possibly answer that?
Yeah, thank you, Chair, thank you, Lesu. In terms of the Sheila, yes, when we go to Cabinet, there will be a detailed performer for all of the sites that come forward. That performer, as you called last time, it has kind of a density, and we do a kind of density multiplier compared to obviously whether that's a rural site, urban site, what the site's being put forward for, kind of a description on the site, a planning history. So there'll be a lot more information when that comes to Cabinet, so hopefully that reassures you. In terms of how long a Sheila lasts, that's an interesting question. We have to do a call for sites at each stage of the local plan. So the main thing is to make sure the sites are still deliverable, because clearly some sites can change ownership between, obviously, us receiving all these sites and obviously us preparing the local plan. And the key thing, as you know, is obviously the deliverability of that site and making sure we've got landowner consent. So yes, we are kind of governed by the fact that we have to do a call for site. You could say, well, you know, we've got more than enough sites now, we don't need any more. But unfortunately, we are governed by the fact that we have to do a call for sites, because in the end of days, there might be a good site come forward at the reg eighteen stage that we hadn't thought of, that actually, you know, is a really good site, but actually we might want to consider allocating. So yes, that's hopefully answered your question, thank you.
It does, thank you very much.
Thank you, Adrian. Councillor Clear.
Thank you, Chair, and this might be answered when Mr Overcheck does his presentation. And I might be jumping the gun, but do we know how much pressure on taking the push requirement at this present time? I would imagine it's probably a big number in the push areas, and we may have to take a substantial amount. So I just wondered if anyone could answer that at the moment. Thank you, Chair.
Simon, I'm sorry to call on you again, but are you able to answer that?
Probably if I may, Chair, I believe that the numbers, I wouldn't want to give you a wrong number, councillor Clear. So, but I think as you alluded to there, I think we can probably pick that up when he runs through that in terms of the quantum that we're looking at. Of course, the other thing is, depending on what the period you're looking at, depends on what the numbers are as well. And it also depends, actually, as a sort of general point, it depends on how much housing that those adjacent districts and cities and boroughs can accommodate themselves. Because you can only talk to Winchester, for example, about taking need that you can't meet. And you've got to be able to show us why you can't accommodate it yourself. But we do accept, obviously, there are some areas, and we probably would name them above other ones, where it is much more of a challenge, shall we say, given the land they have available within their districts to actually find and meet the need. So it's a combination of the need being calculated and the period over which it's calculated, and also the ability of those districts to accommodate their own smoke, if you like. We don't do it unless there's a good justification for considering it. But we have the duties to cooperate, and it's picked up under that. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks, thank you, Simon.
And councillor Horle, and then councillor McLean. Right, councillor Horle, please.
Chair, can I ask, Bridget mentioned the Hersley site and the sort of removal of the large Royal Down initial landholding and the substitution with a multitude of smaller sites. Has that been done in agreement with Winchester City Council, or is that an initiative that was solely from the developer?
Bridget, could you possibly answer that?
Yes, so a lot of those sites around the village are not actually put forward by the developer of Royal Down. The only ones that are put forward by the developer of Royal Down is HU twelve, which are directly to the south of Oliver's Battery. The others are submitted by other parties. So it's purely, as far as I understand, the promoter of Royal Down has written to withdraw and replace with that revised HU twelve.
And Bridget, is that with our agreement? Are we in support of that?
I couldn't say, Adrian, if you've got anything to say on that, I've not been involved in that.
Thank you.
I think obviously our view is is neutral because obviously it is a call for sites and obviously the Sheila sites that come forward. We've obviously made no, um, kind of detailed assessment of obviously the merits or otherwise of, uh, obviously the roll down proposal in detail. So like I say, if a landowner obviously contacts us and says they wish to withdraw a site, we have to take that at face value in terms of obviously whatever reason, uh, has led to their decision. But uh, obviously, we respect their views and obviously we take it out of Sheila and if obviously they withdraw it.
Thank you.
Right, now there was, um, one other councillor.
Councillor McLean.
Councillor McLean. If we could have you, please.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, fine.
Good. Uh, the the problem I have is I've tried watching the presentation that was done earlier and looking at the the maps of the districts. And, you know, I live in Bishopswaltham and I represent Durley as well, and I could read neither of the maps. Now, I have requested paper copies. So, um, I can actually look at them through a a microscope or whatever. But at the moment, I could not follow the presentation, um, because it was too, it was too small. So, um, can you, Chair, or can I ask you to ensure there's some paper copies are sent out? So that we in the southern parishes can actually have a decent look at the maps, because at the moment, we can't. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, well, I think the answer would be, if you could, uh, if those who would like hard copies, if they can contact me, and I'll ensure that they get the particular ones that they want in their particular area.
Will you accept my my that my request then to do that for me, please, so I can have Durley, Bishopswaltham and have a look at Upham because it borders on me?
Fine, okay. Sorry, Durley.
It's important that we can read the maps. And as I say, at the moment, I can't read them and nor can my colleagues.
Okay, thank you. We'll sort that out. Right.
That's all members for that section.
Okay, fine. Well, let's go on to the next item on the agenda, if you're all happy. Which is the, uh, analysis of comments that have been submitted in the local plan, item, uh, agenda item seven. Adrian, I think this is down to you.
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to talk you through, um, a presentation which I'm going to share with you. I'll do the, uh, first part of the presentation and I'll hand over to my colleague, uh, Steve Overcheck to deal with the, uh, second part of the presentation. So if I can screen share this presentation with you. Share with me. Thank you. Matthew, could you just confirm you can see that, please?
Certainly can see it, Adrian. You just need to press on the presenter button.
Yeah.
Make it go to screen.
Thank you. Uh, well, yeah. Is that okay, Matthew?
Perfect, brilliant, brilliant.
Yep. Okay. So what we've done is we've, um, bring into you this evening, uh, comments on the local plan vision and the development strategy. So just to, uh, kind of recap where we are in the process. We obviously did the, uh, strategic issues and priorities consultation, started in February, ended in April. We are at this stage now of analysing all the, uh, comments that we received. And obviously, as a result of our consultation, we did get a lot of comments, which was fantastic to hear that everybody wanted to get involved in the local plan process. And obviously, we are analysing those at the moment. And obviously, all that information, along with the evidence base, we're going to prepare in the draft, uh, local plan. And then obviously move towards the process, uh, coming down the line there towards adoption. So as I mentioned, we've got a fantastic response of two thousand two hundred and two, uh, responses. And there's a breakdown of your screen about how people responded to that consultation. Um, six hundred and three people responded via Citizen Space, uh, so that's our consultation portal. We had one thousand one hundred and eighty three email responses, which basically, if you look at the, uh, analysis of the representation, which are the two word documents, you'll see they've got an E number. We've had fifty responses by letter, and they've got an L number and three hundred and sixty six social media responses. Now, I must just mention that obviously, in a lot of cases, where people, uh, responded either by email or by letter, they were obviously very comprehensive. Uh, some letters went went to twenty eight, thirty pages, forty pages, and had a lot of detailed response in them, which obviously need to be broken down according to what topic they deal with, and obviously analysed in that specific topic. So it has taken a lot of work to get to where we are now. So in terms of the actual vision, uh, one of the first questions we were asked in the SIP consultation was, is the vision in the current local plan still appropriate for inclusion in the new local plan? And what we've got here is a summary of the key points raised, what the, uh, respondents said the new vision should, uh, include. And, uh, just to kind of quickly go through them, it should update to acknowledge the different challenges faced in the district, recognise the shift away from the high street shopping towards more people working from home, refer to the climate change and the Wichita City Council's carbon neutrality goal, refer to the fifteen minute neighbourhood and promote sustainable development and attractive development, and reduce and mitigate CO two emissions. And this was an important one, to ensure the vision is not Winchester centric and supports the market towns and rural area, and promote and prioritise brownfield land to protect countryside and increase green spaces and biodiversity. There was also a key point about addressing the setting the South Downs National Park. Uh, a greater emphasis should be placed on protecting, uh, kind of our historic and cultural heritage, and allowing settlements to grow in a proportional way to accommodate additional growth and locate development where there's existing infrastructure. Ensure affordability and have greater emphasis on sustainable, flexible and multi-generational housing, uh, and promote startups and attract new businesses to the district, encourage traffic, reduce pollution and create an integrated public transport system. So that was the main local plan vision. So we included in the SIP consultation the existing vision. And like I say, we asked for comments about how that should be updated. Uh, and we had some really good feedback there, as you can see, on obviously, uh, the vision, how it could be updated. But you recall also, we asked another question, which was about the Winchester Town Forum vision, which, uh, had its own vision. And we said, obviously, appreciating that, obviously, that's Winchester Town, are there any elements that could inform the new local plan? So again, the key feedbacks were, ensure that the local plan is balanced and reflects the needs of the whole of the district. Use elements of the Winchester Town Forum vision, but acknowledge it does not reflect all of the district. Use the city of walking as a concept, but acknowledge this does not relate to all of the communities. That was particularly pertinent, came out through a lot of comments that we received from the peripheral kind of areas, such as, uh, Oliver's Battery and places like that, where they said it's a great idea, but obviously it doesn't actually apply to us. Support efficient, low pollution transport with a greater emphasis on public transport and cycling. Develop brownfield sites first for housing and reuse vacant office space. Involve involve more organisations with better and more meaningful engagement and consultation. And acknowledge that COVID nineteen has changed the way that we want to live, work and shop, and protect by, uh, green spaces and biodiversity for health and wellbeing. So as I said, um, we obviously received, um, a number of comments and really some really important, uh, points that we need to consider. Um, most of these will be covered in detail in the local plan objectives and the topic sections. But the overall kind of general conclusions, if I was to try and pull them together in terms of obviously the current local plan vision, it needs to be updated to reflect issues such as climate change, sustainable neighbourhoods and development, changes as a result of COVID, protecting the countryside and using brownfield land, and providing and protecting green spaces for biodiversity, health and wellbeing. So it is recommended that a draft updated vision is worked up to reflect these issues. And clearly, a key part of the new vision for the local plan needs to be the development strategy, which we'll come on to in a minute. But the key thing is that we'd appreciate any kind of steer from members, and I'll stop here so that, uh, before we move on to the next agenda item, if I can, Chair, is are there any other key matters that are not covered and need to be included in the updated vision?
Right, thank you very much, Adrian.
Chair, so, um, we've got two members of the advisory group, councillor Brooke and councillor Thompson, uh, and also councillor Rutter, um, as indicated to speak, and councillor Horrell.
Right, let's have councillor Brooke then.
Hello, um, it was just a suggestion. Um, back in two thousand and eighteen, I suggested it might be helpful to look longer term for us. And so while we're doing the local plan to twenty thirty nine now, look out towards twenty fifty, so for a sort of overall vision, so that future local plans can look towards that vision. And we're all clearly, we're all clear on the direction we're headed for future, um, and that sort of thing. So it was just a, is that a possibility that we can do a, um, look towards twenty fifty? And I know that, um, in the current MPPF, that's all things are so encouraged. So it was just a, please, could we consider that?
I think that's a very valid point. I think that we can see we have a big problem with short term thinking, uh, collectively as human beings. Adrian, have you any comment on that?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. No, I I wholeheartedly agree with that suggestion. Um, I think, uh, one of the learning curves that we've had from obviously COVID is obviously that we need to be flexible in terms of the vision because, uh, clearly, obviously, we're all, uh, signing on remotely, and the world does change. So it's obviously trying to be, uh, kind of realistic what that vision's going to be, but obviously looking towards the future so that we can pick up on that flexibility. Uh, but I do agree, if we can look longer term, I think that's a really good idea to try and think, well, okay, how is the world going to change? And the main thing is, when you're preparing a vision, is if you were transported, uh, in time, which obviously would be fantastic, uh, you could then obviously look back and say, this is the place that I wanted to, obviously, be this district to be. So, uh, that's the main thing is put your shoes in, obviously, somebody in, uh, in the forward, uh, kind of, uh, agenda, and obviously think about how would, how would, if I'm looking back now, what would the place look like?
Thank you. Right, then who's the next one? Councillor Thompson, Horrell and Rutter. Right, councillor Thompson, please.
Um, thank you very much, um, uh, Chair again. Um, yeah, um, I'm going to ask the perennial question that I always ask, which is, um, how does student accommodation sort of fit into this vision? Um, I wonder whether you could just give us a steer there because obviously, um, with two universities, um, in Winchester itself, um, we've got, uh, Sparshalt College, um, as well. Um, you know, student numbers are always a key concern. And I just wondered, I I I haven't seen anything in there that sort of says, oh, yes, student, student, student housing. Wonder whether you could, um, just comment on that, Mr. Fox. Thank you.
If I can comment, uh, Chair, thank you, uh, councillor Thompson. No, it's a very good point. Um, we are currently analysing, uh, the comments, um, on the kind of affordability chapter at the moment and student accommodation. But it is a good point in terms of obviously, how does the vision, obviously, uh, support, obviously, the growth of the universities, but likewise, obviously, address some of the pressing issues that I know, uh, obviously, press, uh, councils in terms of obviously homes, uh, ensuring obviously the students don't obviously, uh, dominate residential areas and things like that. So it's a, it's a balance because obviously we want the students because they add to the vitality and vibrancy of the city centre. But it's also a balance to make sure obviously that we, um, we do address their needs. So I think it's obviously, I think it's a really good point that needs to be woven into the vision, but it will be picked up in other topics in the the local plan itself. But I think it's a really valid point, thank you, that we need to pick up in the vision about how we, how we deal with that kind of double issue of obviously balancing those needs.
Right. Thank you, Adrian. Now, there was councillor Horrell. Yes, Chair. Councillor Horrell, please.
Um, Chair, thank you. Um, in an earlier LPAG, I did raise the point about a vision for the district when we considered the town forums version. Um, and I'm therefore not surprised to have had some of the comments through the consultation that they, there's a view that it should be refined. Councillor Brooke has already thought about, uh, twenty fifty and the very good commission that the county undertook to twenty fifty, I think, has been very helpful in mapping out their views, uh, going forward. Um, Chair, can we actually put ourselves a working group together now to really focus on the vision? Because that's such a fundamental part of the local plan. What are we aspiring to for the entire district? Um, I'm slightly nervous that we're going to get a cobble together with all due respect to those doing it because they've got other priorities at the moment, looking at the content, uh, looking at the development strategy, whether we could have a working group that looked at the vision for the district and came forward with the proposal for the broader audience to consider, and indeed took on board councillor Brooke's idea that we looked, um, beyond the twenty thirty nine timeline that we're currently working to. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Horrell. Uh, I think that's certainly an idea worth considering. Um, I think we need to discuss it a bit further. I mean, obviously, it's the, uh, commitment of time and resources, collective resources of of councillors and other, and the officers to put something together.
Chair, Mr. Finch has put his hand up during that.
Oh, right, okay.
I don't know if he wants to.
Yes, please, Mr. Finch.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I mean, we need to give that some consideration, I think, councillor Horrell. I think it's a case of, we can also draw upon what we've done in in previous local plans. Uh, we can look at, um, the suggestions coming forward in the context of this local plan. But I think what's really important, actually, is this group, um, the advisory group we've got here today, which, and the value of bringing, um, parts of the plan as we start to develop it to you, uh, was exactly what this group is designed to do, appreciating clearly, there's only so much that you can, you can cover in in the time that's available. So I think what I'd like to do if if, uh, Chair, is I think we need to just think about the next phase, which is how we distill the feedback we've reported to you today in the headlines, how we've, how we distill that into a vision, uh, that goes into the local plan. Um, bearing in mind, we've got a little bit of time on that because it will then go into the draft local plan, which we're consulting on next year. So, um, I I it's, we're happy to take that on board, councillor Horrell, but I think, um, we need to decide precisely how we think we can, we can, we can work that forward from the sort of headline stuff we presented to you and the comments that you you're making tonight, which are helpful, and distilling that into a vision for the plan. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, uh, Simon. Right, finally, Chair, we've got councillor Rutter. Councillor Rutter, good evening, councillor Rutter.
Good evening, Chair. Thank you for letting me speak. I I was, I wasn't the impression, actually, I was full member of this group, but I'm not on the list, so perhaps we can look into that later. But, um, I just wanted to to check that, um, the vision will include, it may well come already under the umbrella of of sustainability and climate change. But the the very important principle of reuse and repurposing buildings before we even consider demolition. Far too many buildings are just demolished willy nilly without any consideration of repurposing or reuse. And and building codes, and I know that this is, this is a wider vision, but but I think we do need to 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 say right at the beginning, you know, that we are, our aspirations are for much higher levels of of building codes and and those those sorts of things that 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 set out our vision, you know, our vision is for much better quality of buildings than than we're presently being faced with. Um, so if if those can be included in some way in the vision, I'd be very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Rutter. Yes, I think we could probably work those in. I'm very much in favour of, uh, the reuse of buildings and indeed the design of buildings so they are robust and can be reused for, uh, uh, many centuries, well, some centuries to come.
Thank you.
Right. Now, do we want to go on to the next step, stage of this review of the vision, Adrian? Is Steve Overcheck here?
Yep, Steve's there. Steve, I'll just, I'll just, um, bring the presentation back up for you. Okay, can you all see that now?
Yeah, good evening, Chair, and ladies and gentlemen, thank you. Uh, so here we're looking at the part of the future issue. And you'll see there is a detailed summary of all the comments and an analysis of them, as well as the additional documents attached to the agenda. And you'll see that's, um, Home's For, Part One. Part Two will look at other elements that were asked about, including affordable housing and student housing. So those will be coming to a future meeting once, once we've analyzed and and assessed those comments. So this one is is. So this one is is particularly about the development strategy or the the spatial strategy. And there were four options that we asked for people's views on and asked people to rank. And they're set out as approaches one to four on that slide. Um, and you can see from that that the preference from the public consultation was for option one, which is to basically develop the approach in the existing local plan and update that by distributing development to sustainable settlements. Um, and the the least favoured one and strongly objected to in many cases was approach three, which is the new settlements uh or new strategic allocations option. Uh, this is a summary of the comments made on citizen space, which is where people had the opportunity to rank things. There were a handful of others that people sent in their rankings by email or um letter or whatever. Those are recorded in the the detailed background paper to this, but they don't change that overall result. And you've got the exact numbers of people who supported, objected and and whatever to different options. So on the next slide, there was also an opportunity for people to um slide, Adrian, please slide.
Yeah, it's gone.
Say, are there any approaches that we've missed that we? Thanks. Are there any approaches that we missed that should be looked at? Or, and people just use that really as a free text box to make any other comments to support what they said or make any suggestions or whatever. So there were a huge range of comments made on that, but the ones that were most frequently made, the key points are summarized here. Firstly, there was a suggestion that there ought to be a fifth option in in addition to the four that we identified. It was particularly promoted by the Save South Winchester Group and some of the parish councils to the south of Winchester, um who are particularly concerned about the raw down proposals. And their submission, there was a standard um letter or text that they produced. And a lot of people either reproduced that or parts of it or added to it or whatever. So anything that mentioned a fifth option has has been picked up in in the comments, and there were several hundred of them. And the that text set out a number of principles, which were that we ought to count existing housing supply, prioritise brownfield sites, uh redevelop in the city centre, particularly things like vacant shops and so on. Develop parts of the South Hampshire urban areas, develop more there. And allow for small developments in the market towns and villages and support a green belt. So those were the sort of key points that that those promoting a fifth option raised. A lot of people also talked about brownfield sites and wanted to make greater use of brownfield sites and or less use of greenfield sites. And people particularly mentioned vacant shops and and office buildings and land in Winchester Town Centre. Um, some people promoted higher densities, although some people were concerned about that. And there were some calls for an assessment of previously developed land or of urban capacity to look more proactively at whether there are brownfield sites that that could be found. There were a number of comments on housing number issue and the standard method, which is the government's methodology for working out what our housing need and requirement is. Um, various developers pointing out that that is a minimum requirement and suggesting that the council should plan for more. And on the other hand, there's other people saying we should plan, or we shouldn't plan for any. And there was also the the issue of unmet needs in South Hampshire and the push issue, which has been mentioned a few times. I'll I'll say a bit more about that in a moment, but um. So basically, again, developers tended to say, well, you you've got to meet unmet needs as well as your own. And other people saying, well, we shouldn't meet other people's needs on that, but a lot of comments one way or the other. There were a large number of comments on green belt and also suggestions for additional green infrastructure, open space, retaining gaps between settlements and and those sorts of issues. And there were various suggestions for hybrid approaches, so mixing parts or blending parts of the four options that we identified. Um, but there wasn't any consensus on which bits of which options um people preferred. So almost everything that people put forward was a different combination. So there wasn't any particular consensus on how they ought to be mixed. There were various representations from landowners and developers promoting sites. Uh, we we've listed them, listed the sites or where they were. We haven't summarized the details, some of which were extensive. You know, they put in large reports about how wonderful their sites were. We haven't summarized all of that. That's really a Sheila matter. And all of those sites would have been put forward in the Sheila along with a lot of others. So we we haven't got into trying to assess them here. That's, that's not the job of this particular work. And finally, on the key issues, um a lot of support for smaller scale developments and spreading development um amongst smaller sites. Or opposition to large scale developments, which are the sort of same, two sides of the same coin probably. Um, some people also supporting the use of publicly owned land or suggesting that there might be good sites that are available that weren't promoted through the Sheila. So those were the the key points that were raised. And if we move on now, um to what our analysis of those issues really and and what we recommend ending. So we broke this down into a number of headings, starting with the housing requirement. Um, as you know, before we can recommend a development strategy, we need to know what sort of scale development we think we're planning for. Um, basically, we're recommending we should follow the standard methodology that the government gives us. Um, government advice does allow the council to develop its own housing requirement. But it makes clear that is going to be subject to very detailed and rigorous testing when you get to a plan uh and examination in front of an inspector. Whereas if you meet your standard methodology requirement or at least meet it, then you you will have a much more light touch examination on that issue. So because of that, and because we we're not convinced that if if we did our own assessment, it would necessarily come to a very different figure. We recommend going forward on the standard methodology. The problem with that is knowing what it will be when the plan is submitted, which is that that is the point at which we can fix the the housing number. Uh, and or fix it for two years anyway, while the planning's examined and hopefully adopted. Um, but the the various elements that feed into that calculation of the standard method can change. And and one of them changes every year, the affordability ratio changes every year. Um, so that that is going to need to be updated. There's also the government proposals in the planning white paper for a more fundamental reform of the standard methodology, uh which we understand are now being paused. So there is some uncertainty. But we, we do need to carry on and move forward with a plan. We can't afford to get in a position where we we have an out of date plan and we don't have an adequate supply of housing. So we're recommending that we ought to be planning for about seven hundred dwellings per annum, at least in terms of developing a draft local plan. Standard methodology currently um would require six hundred and sixty five dwellings per annum. So it's a bit more than that. But then the 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 figure when we published these strategic issues and priorities document was six hundred and ninety two. So it does vary because of these factors that feed into the figure. Uh, and then we've got plus the possible push unmet need. So if I sort of go off piece from the presentation for a second here, just to try and answer some of the points about push. Um, firstly, on the update, there is or there will be an update going to the Push Joint Committee in October. I'm afraid I don't know what the date of that meeting is. But the there is a report that will update things like the um the housing shortfall that Push believes it needs to find. Because not only does our standard methodology change every year or every time the government changes a part of it, so does every other authorities. And the thing that's that's really going to um affect that update this year is the fact that the government have said the twenty largest cities in in England need to be upping their requirement by thirty five percent. And those, that twenty includes Southampton. So that Southampton's requirement is going to be upped by thirty five percent on top of their standard methodology. Um, so that that is going to have an impact on on the push figures. There there was an update report to Push Joint Committee in September last year, thirtieth of September twenty twenty. And that's really all I can point members to at the moment because the 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 current update hasn't yet been published. At that time, the shortfall was ten thousand seven hundred and fifty. Um, I think, given what I've said about the the Southampton situation and changes to the standard methodology, that's likely to increase. But I can't say any more than that at the moment. And that report also reported on progress on looking at the, uh what are called the strategic development opportunity areas. So there's a study of where that shortfall might be met. And every authority put forward shot sites for Mitch Sheila that could accommodate five hundred or more dwellings to be considered through that process. Um, last year's update had that report being uh considered by the Joint Committee in quarter four of this year. And that that's not going to happen. We're we're almost in quarter four. Um, that has been delayed. Again, I I can't say when that's going to be, but there will be an update on the timing of that at the Push Joint Committee in October. Um, in terms of the the councils and and officers' involvement in that, as Simon thinks, there are various groups. There's a Push Planning Officers Group that I and Adrian Fox sit on. Uh, we're, we're as active as any of the authorities in that, short of actually chairing it. Uh, so that has looked at the consultants' briefs for all of the work and we've, we've made inputs to that. The criteria for assessing sites and so on. So we're we're very actively involved in that. That work then goes to the chief executives before going to the Push Joint Committee uh and members. So that there is an active involvement in that. And also, as Simon said, through the local plan process, that the time that people can formally ask us to help them under the duty to cooperate is when they produce their own local plan. And what we tended to find is that authorities that are producing plans, up to date plans, um like Faram and Haven't, haven't actually got a shortfall. They are building in an element of of extra housing to help meet Push's needs. Whereas authorities that haven't brought a plan forward, like Eastleigh, for example, have got a shortfall. But you would expect when Eastleigh does a plan, it would have actually capacity to to meet its own need and probably some, some above that. So the the shortfall is just a snapshot and it doesn't necessarily mean you're going to need ten thousand or however many sort of greenfield sites in in Winchester or necessarily greenfield sites anywhere, that needs to be updated. But certainly in terms of involvement, um Winchester officers are are fully involved with that process. So to go back to the to the slide, um we're recommending that the local plan period needs to be rolled forward by a year. Um, government advice tells us we've got to have a plan that gives fifteen years from adoption. With the update to when the plan is due to be adopted in twenty twenty four, that means we need to plan to twenty thirty nine. And taking a twenty year period, um we're we're suggesting a local plan period of twenty nineteen to thirty nine. And the other issue under the housing numbers is what happens in the national park. Because the the standard methodology gives us a district wide number, but our local plan isn't going to cover the national park part of the district. So we need to try and agree with the national park, what their contribution will be towards that that annual housing requirement. Now, before um anyone gets too optimistic about that, it will be very modest. Um, when we last looked at this and agreed uh a statement of common ground, when the national park were doing their own local plan, that amounted only to fifteen dwellings a year. So, you know, it's going to be modest. It is a national park and it it's got limited development opportunities. But that needs to be looked at and and we need to come to you on that. So we then look at how do we distribute development? What is the development strategy that we're proposing? Um, I suppose the easy bit is that approach three was got a lot of objection, a lot of opposition. And perhaps more importantly, very limited support. Um, particularly the new settlement element of it, this this was the option for a new settlement or new strategic allocation. Um, and as officers, we we think, you know, those concerns and those objections are valid really, given the times we're in, where, you know, all the discussion is about how do we maintain our existing centres and retail and commercial areas and so on. Um, reduce the need to travel, reduce carbon emissions, use brownfield land and all those things. A new settlement seems to be almost the opposite of what the priorities are at the moment. As you've seen from that table, approach one was the best supported, that got the the most support. And if you look at the detailed report, you'll see actually there was um a a large proportion of people scored that as their first preference. Um, approach four was got quite a lot of support, but that was mainly people putting it as their second preference. So approach one was the one that was best supported. And on the flip side of the new settlements argument, we think that's one that can help support existing settlements. Uh, will make good use or provide opportunities or more opportunities for brownfield sites, uh reduce the need for travel and so on. But we do recommend a bit of a modification to what was set out for approach one in the strategic issues and priorities document and to the figures in that. Um, partly because a number of people pointed out, well, the South Hampshire urban areas, which are basically Whitley and West of Waterlooville, are one off strategic sites. You're not going to be able to repeat them in the next local plan. So we accept they're not going to have the capacity or the number that perhaps we put them in as as potentially having under this option. And we need to reduce that. And also, the, a lot of the development is focused in the southern part of the district. Whereas there are needs for housing, particularly for affordable housing in the north. So what we're recommending is to increase in a modest way the targets for Winchester Town and the market towns and rural area, and in the rural area to identify three additional settlements that would have a housing target. Um, those are Sutton Scottney, South Waston and Otterbourne, which are the the next best performing in terms of sustainable locations after the the settlements are already in hierarchy as having a housing target. And they they all happen to be in the northern part of the district or more in the north and the south. Um, so a help towards that aim of getting a bit better distribution, bearing in mind that, you know, we may well be asked to to help Push provide something. And if we do, that's going to be in the southern part of the district rather than the north. So on the next slide, please Adrian, the the other issues that we considered were the fifth option. Um, we looked at that. It didn't actually have a a distribution of development in the same way that our four approaches did. So we don't think it's it's a spatial strategy in itself, but it did have a set of principles, which I I summarized uh in one of the earlier slides. And in theory at least, they could be achieved with almost any of the approaches. Um, and we think the the strategy that we're recommending to to go with a modified approach one um actually does reflect quite a lot of the principles that the fifth option promotes would would like to see. Uh, obviously rejects a new settlement and in doing that rejects Royal Down, which is one of probably the main reasons that many of those people were commenting. Um, it does take into account existing housing commitments. And in fact, the the strategic issues and priorities, um all of the options there did did make an allowance for existing commitments. Uh, since then, we've been able to complete a windfall study, so we're able to make an allowance for windfall development. It's, it prioritises brownfield development. We can do that because it it's focused on existing um larger built up areas. And it provides for development in the market towns and villages. And and that actually adds uh three new villages to the list of of those where development might be promoted. So we think actually what we're promoting in in terms of a modified approach one. So we think actually what we're promoting in in terms of a modified approach one addresses many of the aims of the fifth option. And then finally, on the key issues that people raise was the question of brownfield sites. Um, basically, many people wanting those to be taken into account, and if anything, give them prior greater priority. Um, they are already taken into account and prioritized, and government advice tells us that we ought to be considering those first, and that that's what we've done in existing local plans. We look at what the capacity of the settlements are um before looking at greenfield allocations, and we we propose to continue to do that. But they are a finite source of supply, and they don't all all come forward at the same time. So what you tend to find is as the use of land or buildings change, they may become vacant or or um surplus to requirements, and they may come but become available for housing development, but that doesn't happen all at once. So it's not realistic to have a local plan that all brownfield sites have got to be used before we release greenfield sites. It it just doesn't work like that, and we probably wouldn't have enough of them anyway, even if we want to do that. But we have done the windfall assessment. Most of the sites in that are going to be ground filled. There are a lot of housing commitments already, but many of those are brownfield. And of course, as a council, we control some of the key ones in in Winchester. The likes of Station Approach and Silver Hill and so on. So uh we need to look at those and and their capacity and whether we can help to increase that and to bring those forward. And as part of the work on the local plan, we're arranging this a series of design workshops. And those are going to look at as a as an exercise, look at opportunity areas in Winchester where there might be scope for redevelopment and increasing densities and so on. So we're we're looking at a number of measures that could be included to promote the use of brownfield sites. Uh, and also picking that up in the vision, as Adrian's mentioned, you know, that that's something that ought to be part of the vision for the whole local plan. So that next slide, please, Adrian, just to move on to conclusions and recommendations. I mean, I think we've probably done the vision anyway, but um obviously, we're saying that the existing local plan vision needs to be updated and particularly to look at the climate emergency and the impact of Covid. Uh, use of brownfield land and so on, and that needs to be worked up, reflecting those issues. And on homes, or we ought to be planning for around seven hundred dwellings per annum plus any possible push need, but we don't yet know what that is. And, you know, as as has been said, we we will have to consider that under the duty to cooperate, whether we feel able to accommodate it is a different matter, although, you know, as was mentioned under the Sheila uh presentation, if we've got land for forty or fifty thousand houses, it's going to be a bit difficult to say we haven't got room for any more, but um, we're recommending that local plan period needs to be updated to give us fifteen years from adoption. We should go forward with a modified version of approach one, which slightly reduces the uh the house and increases it in a limited way for Winchester Town and adds in three new or segments to the list. We're concluding that the fifth option isn't a spatial strategy in itself, but we think many of the points that people um promoted under that are included in the approach we're recommended to take forward. And we're saying that brownfield sites should be prioritized, but we do need to recognize they are a limited source of supply. Um, but the strategy and the vision should um be used to help maximize their use. So I think that's it. Over to questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. O'Cheek. Very useful.
Chair, there was an initial question just before we moved on to
Yep.
other questions. There was an initial question from councillor Hall, I think on Mr. O'Cheek's first slide. She was just asking what scale the first graph.
Oh, right, okay.
Referred to.
Uh, Mr. O'Cheek, there was a question on the
Yes.
graph.
I was hoping no one's going to ask that because this this graph is something that um citizen space produces. And we don't actually know what the algorithm is that lies behind it. So if if you want to know how many people gave different rankings to each option, it's in the detail of the paper that lies behind this. Um, what I what I'm not sure about is what number percentage or whatever goes on each of the bars in this table. That that should be taken just as a sort of visual representation of what what came in. The details to the numbers on on each of the um approaches is in the the background paper behind this.
Right, thank you.
Councillor Evans and councillor Brooke, chair.
Right, councillor Evans, please.
Thank you, chairman. Um, I've got the misfortune of having been through two previous local plans, and now this is my third. I'm not surprised at the consultation results because um there are more people living in Winchester, and they are much more vociferous than perhaps some of the more rural members. Could we not say um that we have already had our duty to cooperate? I'm referring to North Whiteley, um, which is, I think, is four thousand, west of Waterlooville, which was increased from two to three thousand, although a tiny bit of that is in Haven. Um, and then all these settlements down in the south. Um, Swanmore, Wickham, Waltham Chase, Coven Common, Demmeedall took two hundred and fifty houses in the last local plan. Bishop's Waltham took five hundred, and Ausford, moving over a bit, and Kingsworthy took five hundred and two hundred and fifty respectively. Um, and um, I'm I'm sort of quite horrified that possibly we have to accept thirty five percent more. I mean, there just isn't the room for um any more houses down here. Um, and you you're talking about having design workshops, and I read in the papers that um you are going to work with parish councils, but I hope that includes local members because the members understand their areas very well and should be part of the um discussion. Um, and could I have an assurance that we won't be joining up settlements in the rural area?
Right. Thank you for your question. Uh, it's uh Adrian Fox, is it possible to answer that or?
Chair, let Steve start and then I'll add to it if that's okay, chair.
Yes.
Yeah, on on the duty to cooperate point, I mean, all all these developments that councillor Evans has listed are meeting Winchester's own needs. You know, everything in the current local plan is to meet the needs of Winchester district as they were defined at that time. Um, and naturally, everything I've been talking about here of all the different approaches for meeting development needs is actually for Winchester's needs. Um, we may or may not get an additional um request for more from the from the push authorities, but at the moment, what we're talking about is Winchester's needs. And as I've said, we are recommending moving uh sort of moving the emphasis slightly away from the southern parishes towards the north of the district. But the fact remains, if you look at where the most sustainable settlements are, a lot of the of them are in the south of the district. Obviously Winchester is, and there's Ausford and Kingsworthy. But there aren't a lot of other larger settlements in which to meet the development and, you know, the the scale of development we have to provide is set by the standard methodology. We've been looking at the Sheila. There are a lot of sites around. Whether any of them are any good or not is another matter that we'll we'll have to assess and come on to. But, you know, the sites are there, and these these are Winchester requirements we're looking at so far.
Right, thank you.
Chairman, could I just come back on that?
Yes.
I understand that, Steve. I understand that those are Winchester's needs. And also that we haven't really got any space left unless we join up the settlements, which was my last question, which you can answer in a minute. But as to the um South Downs National Park, um, I sit on the planning committee, and we have certainly given um permission for more than fifteen dwellings um this year. I think they will increase the tally um if we we talk to them. But my my big worry is for settlements like Waltham Chase, Swanmore, they haven't really got any local facilities nor any space to take anymore. They're not market towns, obviously. But you can't load everything into the market towns, which I hope is not what you were saying, Steve.
Did you do you want me to uh respond to that, Chair?
I think if you could do, yes.
Yeah, so I mean, on on the separation of settlements, obviously, we we've got policies in our current local plan to maintaining gaps between settlements, including Waltham Chase and Swanmore. Um, I'm I'm sure the intention would be to try and retain those, and when when you look at the scale of development per settlement, it's not necessarily that huge. Um, but, you know, as as I've said, the call
Sorry, you're breaking up.
Yes. So I'll just say that the the sites are there in the Sheila, and we need to now assess them and look at whether they're suitable for development and what effect that would have on the gaps between settlements as well as infrastructure and all the rest of it.
Right, thank you.
And sorry, Chair, to come in again, members involvement.
Well, yes, I think, uh, as Adrian Fox said at the beginning, the idea is to involve parish councils in this because they have the local knowledge about what is the most appropriate site for the development. Sorry, Adrian, would you like to uh put that in a slightly more technical way perhaps?
Uh, uh, thank you, Chair. Thank you, uh, councillor Evans. Uh, yes, no, we would definitely welcome member involvement in those discussions uh for all the very reasons that you've uh put out, that obviously you've got the local knowledge. So yes, we would would involve you in those discussions and really welcome your input. Thank you.
Right, thank you, Adrian. Very useful.
Councillor Brooke, Chair.
Right, councillor Brooke, please.
Thank you, Chair. Um, so I've got a few questions, if I may. If you'd like me to bunch them all together. So firstly, Steve, thank you for a very um easy to understand, straightforward presentation. Um, I just wanted to ask, though, it felt from um what you were saying that you haven't completely analyzed all the data. And I just wondered when that will have been completed and um if if that will change anything. Um, I also wondered, looking through the way we're talking about the vision and people's responses, none of this so far feels like any sort of a step change based on the fact that this local plan is being taken under the declaration of a climate emergency. Even it's been alluded to at various points during the presentation, but I'm not really feeling that climate change is in any way at the heart of this, as I expected to see it. Um, so I just wanted to reference um that and also the um unmet need you referred to of ten thousand seven hundred and fifty. And then clarified that being that Eastleigh probably could meet their need and a little bit more when they get their plan in, and Farham, et cetera. So what um in previous discussions was the outstanding number? I understand that that will have changed, and you've just put thirty five percent onto Southampton as well. But I just wondered what previously the unmet number that plans weren't able to meet were, just to give us a finger in the air type of numbers we might be talking about that won't understand, won't all come to Winchester's way, but ten thousand seven hundred and fifty sounds frightening. So I just wondered if there was a closer estimate based on previous figures that you could share with us. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. O'Cheek, if you could answer that.
Yep. So on the data analysis, you you'll have seen what we're recommending is is carrying forward something similar to the current local plan. What we haven't done is put a target number on various settlements because we do need to update all the information on uh current commitments, completions as we move the the local plan period forward. Um, and we also need to look at are are the sites actually um are the suitable sites in those settlements? So, you know, whereas in the past, we had a target of two hundred and fifty or five hundred dwellings for different sizes of settlements. Um, it may be that some of them might not be able to accommodate um a similar number again or whatever. So we we deliberately avoided that until some more work is done. Clearly, that needs to be done by the time we get to a draft plan, so that will be what feeds into drafting the local plan. And as I think councillor Hall said, there are all the other topics that we consulted people on that need to be taken into account as well. Um, on the step change issue, um I the the existing local plan strategy was found to be a sustainable strategy, and and that was based on putting development in the most sustainable locations. You know, we've we've asked people what they think the the best strategy would be, and they they are coming back with something similar. So it's it's not necessarily a step change. That doesn't mean it it doesn't take account of the climate emergency or the need to, um, you know, reduce travel and all the rest of it. The unmet push number, um, that is basically just made up of each authority's officers saying or calculating what is each authority's standard methodology requirement and how much housing is already committed. So that's why I say as as new local plans come forward, additional land will be released, and that that may reduce the shortfall. Uh, equally, the fact that Southampton's um requirement has suddenly been bumped up has obviously increased it. So at the moment, tho- those numbers are just um a calculation of need versus supply. They're not a strategy that says Winchester or anywhere else ought to be accommodating any or so much of that need. That that is what the the future work on the strategic development opportunity areas and on a strategy will will come up with in due course.
Right, thank you. Very useful.
Thank you. Sorry, I just wanted to say, I'm picking up on what councillor Horle suggested earlier about us putting together a focus group. I'm just wondering if moving forward, because it we're saying basing this vision on the previous vision from the previous local plan about sustainability and things. I wondered if as a group, if we were afforded the opportunity to get together, we could put climate change really as the main focus of the plan, rather than sort of picking up some of the learning points from the previous one. I just wanted to restate that. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah. Right, Chair, we've got one member of the advisory group, councillor Horle, and one non-member councillor Laming. Right, let's have the advisory group, councillor Horle, please.
Chair, thank you for allowing me to speak again, um, and thank you to Adrian, to Simon and to to Steve for answering all our questions. We appreciate their support. Um, two questions from me. Um, the South Downs National Park, which um clearly um takes a significant part of the district, forty percent of the district, but um absolutely doesn't take its allocation of houses. And um we heard fifteen per annum mentioned this evening, I think, by Mr. O'Cheek. Um, could we just hear a little more about what pressure and discussions we're bringing to bear on the South Downs National Park? Because there are, I can think of one particular site um in um our district that could hugely benefit um both the South Downs and ourselves in terms of improving uh the uh space uh from a biodiversity point of view and environmental point of view, but also help to add to our housing numbers. So I'm I'm a little in the dark as to who's actually having any meaningful conversations with the South Downs National Park. Um, I do think, just to point, and and I heard Mr. O'Cheek's comment, I do think if we're going I do think if we're going to have graphs and visuals in presentations, we do have to annotate them. I think it's good practice to put scales on and numbers rather than just, these are indicative. And I would just push back on officers that if you're going to use them in a meaningful way, they ought to be annotated appropriately. And then finally, I have a question, Chair, and I don't know where the SIPS, but we have told our parish councils and our various communities, village design statements, neighbourhood plans are all important, important contribution to the new planning policies that we will be using. And yet I hear some of the parishes are struggling to achieve the appropriate sort of processing of their updated VDSs simply because we're short of resources. So my question, perhaps to Mr. Finch, is how are we going to manage to do this when we still have this enormous quantity of feedback to analyse, which in fairness, we need to be able to make the right decisions on the plan, but also supporting our parishes and the like who've made the efforts to update these documents which make a contribution to the plan? How can we support them? Do we need more resources to be able to achieve this? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Perhaps, Simon, as we discussed this morning, we are already working on what sort of resources are needed for various items in the, in pushing the local plan forward. Could you perhaps give a brief summary of that?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I mean, I think it's a case in terms of where the plan is headed to. And I think there's going to be a greater emphasis on design. You know, we've got now a national model of design code. We've set up the workshops we've talked about in terms of the sort of three steps to feed into the local plans. All those things are happening. We've obviously, the nature of the district being what it is, it's a big rural district. Even if you took out the forty percent of the National Park, we've got a lot of towns and villages, et cetera. And it's one, you know, great that they want to engage and help us effectively develop sort of design policy, local design policy and village design statements. And I think it's a case of with the rest of the world, you know, you're only going to be able to do so many of those at a time. I mean, some, they've got a shelf life. I mean, what I think is encouraging about them though is a lot of the work that's done, whether it feeds into those village design statements. I mean, they do date eventually, of course they do, because every place will change. But they have quite a decent shelf life and we'll just have to, and we are working on those at the moment. I think we've been working with Cold and Common, we've been working, I think, with Littleton and Harestock. So there is a process that's ongoing. And as said before, because of the direction the planning system is, looks to be heading in, then those things will be important going forward. But whether they then turn into something like a local, you know, design code is something which will still need to be clarified. And it's something you have to keep under review, but you know, you can never, you know, you can never do everything that you want to do at the same time. So you've always got to plan these things in a sequence, I suppose. One of the things I was just going to mention with councillor Brook's point on climate change, et cetera, and the vision, as I think we've explained, what we're doing is bringing this in, hopefully sort of bite sized chunks. Because as we go through and analyse all the feedback that we got on the SIPS, then we're bringing it in manageable bundles, if you like. Today's really important because it is vision and it is development strategy. Both those things are really, they're high level, but they're really important. And, you know, if the impression was that it's not at the heart of it, then that's probably something more that we can, we could sort of push and present that a bit harder because it's certainly something, everything that we're going to do, including through the local plan, will be looked at through that climate change lens. But there's, we're going to be work coming forward that we're analysing and we'll bring back to you, which will cover some of these issues potentially in more detail, whether, for example, it's sustainability in terms of building performance or whatever. And those things will all be, you know, galled together and come into the, into the local plan and which we will consult on next year as a draft. And that's when you begin to see those policies and everything with me on the bones. Basically, at the moment, it's doing the higher level analysis, but you've got to do that before you can distill it into meaningful policies, et cetera. So I think that's probably where we are with that. But certainly, you know, climate change is going to be very, very key. The only constraint we may have to deal with, of course, is the national planning policy context because any policies that we want to put into our new local plan are always going to have to take account of what the national policy says, whether it's NPPF or policy statements, et cetera, by the government. Because, you know, when we get to examination stage, that's what will be examined again. So we just need to have an eye on that as well, which we need to sort of blend into the policies that we're able to bring forward. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Simon. Right, I'm conscious that time is ticking by. We had, we've got councillor Laming and councillor Thompson. Right, let's have councillor Laming, please.
Thank you, Chair, just three quick points. I'm heartened to see that you wish to keep the separation between settlements because if you look at the proposed draft Sheila, you close the gap between Shalford and Otterbourne, which is quite a strategic thing to maintain, I believe. The second thing is that when we're looking at increasing the size of Otterbourne itself, are we going to take into account the environmental issues that I brought up before regarding the water table and the water supply of that? And the climate change, yes, it should be, and Simon's answered most of the questions, that we have tried in the last round, local plan to increase our energy efficiency on the buildings, but we've been thwarted because of national government policy, which I think we need to find a way around to make sure that we can actually build much better and efficient buildings. So if you could just cover those points, I'd be grateful.
Right. Adrian, is there anything you can say about that, about the meeting higher planning standards and energy efficiency?
Thank you, Chair. I think in the strategic issues and priorities document, we certainly did put the climate emergency at the heart of the document that we consulted on. And obviously, that will be continually emphasised in the draft Reg eighteen plan. We did put forward in the strategic issues and priorities document a number of things that we could do positively, which we worked up with our colleagues at Winac in terms of obviously addressing the climate emergency. And obviously, we are keen to work with them to take forward those proposals. We are, as Mr. Finch indicated, a bit constrained by what the government says. And obviously, I've got an eye to the examination and making sure that obviously we've got a sound local plan. We're also just in the process of commissioning, well, we'll be interviewing this week and commissioning consultants to undertake what's called a local plan viability assessment. Now, that's a really important study for the local plan because it needs to look at all the cost implications of introducing different policies to the local plan. And that's often a balancing act to say, well, okay, we want forty percent of affordable homes, for example, we want this, we want that, and what is the actual cost? And the consultants who we will be appointing to do that commission will need to look at that kind of the wishlist, if I call it that, and obviously identify, and we need to work with them to identify our council priorities in terms of where we want to obviously bring forward development and also obviously achieve everything we want to achieve. So that's a really important study that will be commencing kind of, well, probably October time and going up to the local plan examination. And there will be a series of presentations about baseline information, about what is actually viable in the district, what's been achieved, what's not been achieved and the challenges that are facing us. So like I say, we will be looking at that in detail. But like I say, we've had some really positive engagement with our colleagues at Winac and we want to continue that discussion about what the local plan can do. Thank you, Chair.
Can I just come back for a quick second?
Yes, okay, Brian, just a quick one, yes.
Yeah. Basically, viability is a big issue in Winchester and it really boils down to the fact that the developers overpay and then expect us to pick up the tab on the viability side. So is there a way that we can start controlling that? Because it is a vein of our life on planning committee.
If I can come back to that point, Chair. I think the change in the emphasis of putting the local plan viability into the plan making side of things should hopefully stop those discussions at, obviously, planning committee. That's the whole idea is that you do it at the plan making stage. And obviously, you have those discussions about what the baseline is, what's acceptable, developers' profit. We involve developers and agents in those discussions. So we've got a really good baseline in terms of obviously assessing those policies. The whole emphasis is put to the plan making stage. And hopefully, at development management stage, you've probably agreed what policies are viable. So the intention is, as the government has said, is that you kind of remove those discussions at the development management stage. But obviously, clearly, there will be some discussions happen. But like I say, that's the intention of doing the local plan viability assessment.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now councillor Thompson, I think you've got a question?
Yes, thank you, Chair. It was just coming in on the climate change piece that people are now talking about. I think that the strategy that we've set out is very different actually from the last local plan. For instance, we're talking about creating fifteen minute cities to enable people the ability to walk and access facilities without having to jump in their car, which is much better environmentally. As Mr. Fox has just said, we will be doing a study in terms of sort of viability and what we can do around building homes and premises to a more sustainable, carbon neutral set of sort of targets. And also, let's not forget that at business and housing, the Winchester Green Economic Development Strategy had its first airing and a lot of work has gone into this. It's taken quite a lot of stakeholder engagement, there's a huge evidence base for this, making sure that our district can go forward and recover and go forward in a sustainable fashion. And this, of course, will sit alongside anything that we produce by way of the local plan. It's a really important document. And I think, you know, to suggest that we're not doing anything different from the last local plan is nonsense. Thank you.
Right, thank you. I think we might call that a close for the questions on that particular item. The next item we have on the agenda is to think about the next steps. I wonder if I might ask Adrian to give us a brief summary about the next steps in this process?
Thank you, Chair. I've covered some of the points in the answers to the kind of questions, but just to summarise, we are trying to arrange at least another two more LPG meetings towards the end part of November, which we would really appreciate your support with. We're just circulating some dates at the moment with councillor Gordon Smith. So once we've got those, we'll get those circulated. We do need to bring to you some work the landscape team have been doing on the landscape characterisation assessment and open space strategy. And also, obviously, more importantly, obviously, the analysis of the rest of the representations, which my team are working hard on. So like I say, I hope to get those dates in the diary fairly soon so we've got some certainty when they're going to happen because clearly, we need to finish our analysis of the representations to enable us to move to the next stage, which is actually sit down and actually work out what all of these comments are actually saying for obviously how we're going to develop and change the new local plan. Say, in terms of other streams of work, there is obviously the local plan viability assessment that will be starting in earnest in October. And obviously, as Steve Operchek has mentioned, obviously, there's various push work being undertaken, including basically tenders which need to be assessed for the green belt work, which is being coordinated by the push team. So like I say, there's a lot of kind of strands of work that are well underway. And obviously, we need to bring the Sheila to the cabinet meeting to agree, obviously, to approve that for publication. So they are kind of our kind of immediate priorities in the next couple of months. And happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Adrian. Right, councillor Horle, Chair. Councillor Horle, please.
Chair, Adrian did not mention the vision, slightly surprisingly, given that we've had quite a conversation about that this evening. Where does that fit, please?
If I can answer that, Chair, we will be obviously progressing work on obviously the vision. But obviously, at the moment, my main priority is to try and kind of roll our sleeves up and finish the analysis of all the other comments that we've received so that we can bring those to LPG. So like I say, in the short term, in the next month, month and a half before the next meeting, we've got to focus on that. So whilst we've got the feedback for you, I've made copious notes about the feedback that we've received there. Like I say, I haven't got the capacity at the moment to move that forward because we need to focus on obviously the representations and getting those to you.
Thank you. Right. I think at that point, we might draw events to a conclusion. I'd particularly like to thank the officers, Adrian Fox, Simon Finch, Steve Operchek and Bridget Taylor for all the work they've done beforehand and for, I think, very comprehensively and quickly answering questions and points as they came up. It's been excellent and thank you very much. I'd also like to thank all the councillors and members of the public for attending. It's been quite a long evening, but I think it's been very constructive and I think we've moved things forward and we can see a way ahead. And I found it very interesting myself and very enjoyable. So thank you for your attendance and your time. Now, we have to.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair and the officers.
Good night to you. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.